Thank you. Thank you, everybody. This is the West Newbury Planning Board Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four meeting. It is seven P M according to Verizon. And we'd like to get underway. We'll introduce the board members here. I'm the Chair, Brian Murphy.
I'm Zeb Hamilton, planning board member.
I'm Tim Cronin, I'm a planning board member.
Greg, planning board member.
Sue Brown, I'm Brown.
And we have another member who's remote.
Yes, hi, everybody. Yep, Anne Bardine, planning board member.
Very good, thank you. So tonight, we primarily will be talking about the proposed multifamily zoning. But we first need to deal with part of our zoning changes, sort of the changes of definitions. And that should be fairly short in our definition section. And we're going to have Sam Josselin, the Building Commissioner, discuss that. And then we'll move right into the the main topic that has brought you up here tonight. Okay, and once we finish with that, I'll just kind of explain the rules of the road and how we're going to work on this interactive discussion here. And it looked like it was raising a hand. Yes.
Yep, Brian, I just wanted to read the legal notice when you're ready.
We have it here, just in case.
All right, all right. The West Newbury Planning Board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four, during a meeting that begins at seven P M to consider and report on the board's recommendations for the following proposed amendments to the Town of West Newbury zoning bylaw and zoning map. Number one, to allow for multifamily housing in the proposed MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Overlay District or Districts, abbreviated MICMOD, by right, and other limited uses by special permit subject to and in compliance with certain requirements and limitations as set forth in the proposed amendment. Number two, to update the town zoning map to include the proposed MICMODs. And number three, to amend Section Two definitions to update, add to, and make certain definitions congruent with Mass State Building Code definitions, and to delete definitions for terms not found elsewhere in the zoning bylaw. The current zoning bylaw, along with texts of the proposed amendments and proposed zoning map, are on file with the town clerk. To view the proposed changes, you can visit the town's website, the Planning Board section. Interested persons may participate in the hybrid public hearing in person at Town Offices, three eighty one Main Street, first floor meeting room, or by joining from computer, tablet, or smartphone using the link provided on the public meeting calendar on the town's website. Anne Bardine, Clerk.
Thank you, Anne, appreciate it.
Okay.
The the first item is the changes in definitions. Is Sam available?
I'm here, and thank you, guys, for letting me go first. Mine hopefully will be short. So as part of our reorganization and just reconfiguring our zoning to make it a little bit more clear, a little more user friendly, we have already reorganized it. The next step is to start section by section, going through and making corrections as needed. So the first section I came to was the definitions. Found there was a lot of words in the definition that we used nowhere else in the bylaw that we wanted to delete. There were state definitions that had changed that we wanted to update to reflect the state definitions either in Mass General Law or in seven eighty C M R, which is the State Building Code. None of the definitions make a substantial change to the meaning in the town zoning bylaw. They just make it so that when we use a word, it is a little bit more consistent. And as someone that is both the zoning enforcement officer and the building official, I use both these codes. And it becomes very difficult to enforce two different regulations when the words mean two different things being one person. So and I think it will help just clarify some things. So if anyone has questions, I'd be certainly happy to answer those.
Board members, any questions with Sam? And we've been over this numerous times. And as Sam mentioned, we rely on his view of what the state law is versus what had been in our town definitions. And frankly, we've just modified them. And as he said, there was really no substantive change of the bringing language up to date in compliance with state regulations. I'm happy to entertain any questions that there may be about our definitions. So where is aspects of the zoning code? And I might say that has nothing to do with the main topic here, your report tonight. Do we see any questions online? All right, this. And none, none here. I don't believe, do we need to take a vote on this? No. It's really, somebody had a question. Okay, thank you, Sam, appreciate your help.
Sure, if anyone has questions after the meeting, they can always give me a shout, shoot me an email. I'd be happy to discuss anything with them if they have questions or concerns. Other than that, again, thank you very much for taking this up first, and I hope the rest of the meeting goes almost as quickly.
We'll, we'll see, Sam.
Good, good luck. Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. All right, so now that I'm turned on to the the main agenda item, the proposed multifamily zoning overlay district to comply with MBTA Communities Act. So what we will have here is a presentation that may take fifteen minutes, plus or minus. It'll be handled by Dylan Sussman, a consultant with the consultant, the firm of Dotson and Flinker. They were hired last spring. I don't know the data, Sam. And it worked extensively with with us over the course of the two thousand and twenty three. And he'll go over the number of meetings we had and what we did with public input and any one line. Following that, I would ask that you hold questions, write down some questions or whatever. If board members want to make any comment at that point, but basically it's here to hear some input, answer lots of questions and whatnot. And trying to do a dual arrangement here, this could be challenging. There'll be plenty of questions here, but there probably going to be some questions online as well. So we're going to do the best we can to get everybody's concerns or the information that people want. So anyone have anything else they'd like to say? Then we'll turn it over to Dylan Sussman. And.
Good evening, good evening, members of the Planning Board and members.
Thanks for joining us. Dylan, I just made you host. If you want to run the slides from your computer, if you prefer to meet in here on the laptop, I'm happy to do that.
Sounds good. All right. I'll share my screen in a moment. So I'm happy to see there are a lot of new faces and people both in the room and virtually. As the, as Brian said, we've been working on this project for about a year and have had a lot of meetings. So it's nice to see some new interest in the project. Okay, so I assume you're here to learn about West Newbury's Housing Opportunities Initiative, which is the effort to produce zoning to bring to town meeting that's compliant with the state, new state law, otherwise known as the MBTA Communities Law. So I'm going to start a little bit with just a brief context of of why this zoning was written and what the law is all about. So the MBTA Communities Law is the change to state law. It's a change to the zoning section of the state statute and also some compliance guidelines that were adopted by the state agency called E O H L C, or the Executive Office of Housing and Living Livable Communities. It applies to one hundred and seventy seven communities, and West Newbury is one of those. There are three or four different categories of communities under the law, and yours is an adjacent small town, which means you have the least onerous requirements under this law. So it requires, the law requires that any communities that that is subject to it has at least one zoning district that allows multifamily housing by right. And it defines multifamily housing as a building with three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. So if you have two duplex buildings, two two-unit buildings on one lot, that's considered multifamily under the zoning. Or you could have, like I said, three or more units in one in one building, and that would also be multifamily. The law requires that zoning that's adopted have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. So a unit is a complete living quarters for one household. So there have to be fifteen of those allowed on every acre. That doesn't mean that any project is necessarily going to build at that density, just that the law, that the zoning allow that. The the compliance guidelines set forth the number of units that West Newbury has to create the capacity for rezoning. And that is five percent of your total number of existing housing units based on most recent census, which equals eighty seven multifamily units. So if you do the math on that, at fifteen units per acre and eighty seven units, it means you need to zone for a minimum of five point eight acres to comply with law. So why did the state pass this? It was actually part of an economic development package that was passed by Governor Baker during Governor Baker's administration. And it's it's because there's a housing shortage in the state. And that impacts people who need places to live, particularly young people and older people looking to downsize, people who can't afford or don't want a single family house. And as you can see on this graph on the right, this is a a population pyramid for West Newbury. And there's a bit of a gap in your population between the ages of twenty and about fifty. If you compare that to the state, you would have a much more of a an even distribution of age in those in that range. So you, like many communities, are missing that sort of young adults to early middle age period. Part because people can't afford to to settle in your community. So that is a drag on the state's economy, which is why it was included in economic bill. It's a drag because companies can't find employees. And also because the cost of housing is pretty high. So changing local zoning can stimulate the development of more diverse types of housing. When I say more diverse types of housing, I mean anything other than single family housing, which is the majority of what there is in Massachusetts. And this law is intended to increase the supply of market rate multifamily housing. So it's not about affordable housing, it's about market rate. And the idea of it is that if you rezone enough land for multifamily housing, there'll be stimulus in the market. There'll be opportunities for people to, for for private developers to build that housing. And that ultimately, the price for it will moderate. So right now, across Massachusetts, and particularly in the sort of like eastern part of the state, with very little land zone for multifamily housing, the price of that land is sort of inflated, right? Because there's a short supply. So if you rezone a broad area, create the capacity for a lot of, you know, it's the ideas that will bring down the price or moderate it overall and result in a lot of production of housing so that lots of people have places to live. So just a reminder, this is about changing zoning. West Newbury is not required to build the units, you're just required to adopt compliant zoning. You're not required to provide infrastructure to make projects feasible. And the projects must still comply with all the environmental laws that are in place, like the Wetlands Protection Act and septic requirements. The law says you have to zone for multifamily by right and that your density that you allow for is at least fifteen units per acre. But again, that doesn't mean that what gets built will be at that density. It may be at less than that density, particularly in a community like West Newbury, which doesn't have a wastewater treatment facility. And so development to date has relied on septic systems, which limit the amount of development you can do on any site. So if West Newbury chooses not to comply with this law, if something goes to town meeting and people don't vote for it, the potential consequences are a loss of funding. So there are a number of grants that are specifically called out that West Newbury would not qualify for and others that it wouldn't score well for if they were, if you applied for them. Those include Mass Works, which is the state's main funding programs for things like road and other infrastructure, new housing works, infrastructure program, local capital projects funds, et cetera. There's also legal risk. So there was a memo issued by Attorney General in March of two thousand and twenty three that basically said, this is not optional. It is the law, and you are required to comply with the law. And that if you don't, you'll be at risk for liability under state and federal housing laws. So you you're probably aware that Milton, the town of Milton, adopted MBTA Communities Compliance Zoning, and then by referendum overturned that decision. And so there, we're not in compliance with the law. There's a timeline by which different kinds of communities have to comply at different stages. You're on the late end of the spectrum, and Milton was on the early end of the spectrum. And as a result of of them not complying, they have been sued by the state. So those are, those are the consequences. It's up to your town meeting to decide whether those consequences are something that you think are serious enough to adopt this. And then on the plus side, you could just adopt it because you think it's a good idea. You know, if you agree that there is a housing shortage and that multifamily housing is necessary, and that would be valuable for West Newbury. And there are certainly people in your community who who do think that way. We've heard that at previous meetings. I'm going to walk through the proposed zoning now. Just a little background on how we got to what's written down. So we undertook a townwide mapping analysis to identify suitable locations that involved basically looking at regulatory constraints and physical constraints to development and sites that were large enough to meet the requirements of the zoning of the law. And through that identified a small number of sites that seemed reasonable to pursue the zoning on. We then held the public design workshop investigating those selected sites. So you see a picture of people there looking at a maps. We did some interactive modeling at that at the meeting. From the results of the meeting, we developed concept plans. So you can see the model in the bottom right that groups of your fellow citizens produced for one of these sites, and then a concept plan that was was drawn by my boss, who's a landscape architect. Then we developed zoning for selected sites based on the concept plans. So basically, the idea is figure out what what makes sense for a site, what you want the development to be like, and then base the zoning on that. There are four virtual community forums, two in-person community forums, discussion at fourteen planning board meetings. And then we've revised the zoning based on feedback from the public, the Planning Board, the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit, and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So it's it's been a bit of a process to get to this point. And there's been a fair amount of of public input and discussion so far. So at this point, there are two sites that are under consideration for this overlay district. The first is three seventeen Main Street, which is also known as the Dunn Property. You may know the the greenhouse that's at the front of the site. There's fifteen acres stretching up a steep slope and then fields in the back with additional greenhouses in the back. It's on Main Street. It's a quarter mile to services, the post office and churches, and about a mile and a half to the new middle high school. Part of this project, there was a separate consultant who looked at water access and availability for these potential sites, and they found that there's sufficient water access for the site using town water, but its fire flow may not be adequate. The second site that is under consideration for the overlay district is one eighty seven Main Street. That's also known as the Knapp Property. It's again, it's a site that has a greenhouse up by the road. Nineteen acres. It's privately owned, like the Dunn site, half a mile to services, the post office and churches, and a bit closer to the middle and high school at three quarters of a while. Both water access and fire flow are adequate on the site. As you can see in the in the map there or the aerial photo, there's a bit of a swell along the front of the site, in other words, a drainage. There's the view of the field from the road. And then the back of the site is largely wetlands. So a little less than half of the site is wetlands. So the the overall approach to the zoning, and I apologize, this is where we get into zoning, which is it is what it is. It's, you know, it's law, and it's a little bit. It takes some attention. Takes some attention to understand what I'm going to say, especially if zoning is something you're not familiar with. So if you have any questions when I'm done, I or the board will be happy to answer them. Okay, so the basic approach is to adopt an overlay district on either three seventeen Main Street or one hundred and eighty seven Main Street. So just because I'm sure somebody's going to ask me what an overlay district is. So an overlay district is an area. It's typically an area of your, of a town in which an additional type of zone is is overlaid on the existing zoning that's in place. That either creates new restrictions or gives new rights. Though in this case, it's an overlay district that allows people to develop multifamily housing. And along with that, there are a lot of development standards that say what that multifamily housing should be like to ensure that it produces attractive developments that are appropriate for your community. So when you adopt an overlay district, the underlying zoning is still in place, and the properties to which the overlay district is subject still have all the rights that the underlying zoning gives them. So they can either opt into the overlay district or they can use the base zoning. So with this approach, either the entire parcel for one eighty seven Main Street or the entire parcel for three seventeen Main Street would be designated an overlay district. And then from there, the zoning uses an approach that's similar to your open space preservation development bylaw, your O S B D bylaw, which is, if you're, you might be familiar with the idea of cluster zoning. The idea is that you're going to develop a portion of the property, and you're going to preserve another portion of the property. So what would happen is, say you take a property like three seventeen Main Street. The applicant would designate a development area on this parcel. So they're going to, they're going to draw a line on a map that's going to show basically the area that they're going to disturb through development. And then the remainder of the parcel must be protected open space. Within the development area, so a portion of this property, multifamily is allowed by right, it's required by the law. It would have, it would allow a maximum of eighty seven units, which is what you're required to zone for. And a maximum of fifteen units per acre of developable land, again, what you're required to do under the law. There would be only one development area allowed in the district. The development area could be up to eight acres on three seventeen Main Street and up to nine acres on one eighty seven Main Street. I think those numbers are up for some discussion. They're based on the proposed size. They're they're based on the the concept plans that were drawn during the planning process. So what this looks like is, here's a concept plan that was, we drew during the during the planning process, and it's been reviewed by the public in past meetings in the Planning Board. So this shows what a development with the eighty seven units might look like. This is speculative. It's purely drawn by us to help inform zoning. There's no development proposal on the table. Again, there's no development proposal on the table. This is drawn by us to help inform the zoning. We find that if we try to visualize what people want, then we can customize the zoning to match that. So say somebody comes in with a proposal like this. They designate the development area. In this case, it's about eight acres outlined in blue here. And then the remainder of the site would have to be protected open space with a with permanent protection. So in this case, there's seven acres of protected open space. If the soils and the project finances allow a wastewater treatment facility to be built, eighty seven units could be developed. Otherwise, the project would be limited by Title V septic capacity, which essentially is about ninety bedrooms per project. So that's about thirty three bedroom units or forty five two-bedroom units. So the the law requires you to zone for eighty seven units. That's not possible unless there's a wastewater treatment plant.
Well.
There are no wastewater treatment plants. I'm going to ask you to hold comments till the end or questions. So there isn't a wastewater treatment facility in in West Newbury. So it's fairly unlikely, barely to highly unlikely that one would be viable at eighty seven units. Typically, to make a wastewater treatment facility viable, you need hundreds of units. So let's look at another site. This is one eighty seven Main Street. So again, a concept plan showing what a development with eighty seven units could look like. The development area could be about plus or minus, basically minus. And then the protected open space would be about eleven acres, predominantly in the back. Just to note, behind this property, there's a town-owned parcel of open space. Just to note that behind this property, there's a town owned parcel of open space that's currently landlocked. So. The benefits of this approach, um. With a development area. And then protected open space. And zoning the entire parcel is that there's flexibility for the applicant to develop. Um, to adjust the development area based on site constraints and their. Development program, in other words, what they think they want to build. Um, it protects the open space, it caps the units at eighty seven per sub district. Just gonna stop and make a note here that. There is a question from. There's a question of whether the attorney general will allow a unit cap. There's two people who are reviewing zoning for the state, one is the executive office of housing and liberal communities. And the other. Is the attorney general's municipal law unit, which reviews all zoning that towns pass. Executive office of housing and liberal community says that eighty seven units cat, having a unit cap is perfectly acceptable. Um, the attorney general. Seems to be signaling that they're not quite sure if the unit cap is, is acceptable. What they've said is that there has to be a legitimate planning purpose for it. And it has to be documented. In your case, I think it's well documented and I think there's a legitimate planning purpose. Um, just want to put it out there, so you know. There's full disclosure. In any case, you still have the fifteen unit per acre. Um, maximum. Even if the attorney general eventually was to strike down the unit cap. Like I said. It's a little technical when you're dealing with zoning. Okay, so other standards, um, there's a, there's a raft of standards in the zoning. If you've looked at it, it's about forty pages long. And then that's because it includes. A lot of things that people would be required to do to develop nice places to live. Um, so there are basic lot standards, which are the dimensions that. Development has to. Uh, conform to. So front setbacks along Main Street would be averaged based on adjacent structures. The front setbacks elsewhere in the development would be a minimum of five feet from the street or the right of way. Um, side setbacks within the development would be seven and a half feet. Rear setbacks would be ten feet. There is a requirement for a transitional buffer around the edges of the district of thirty feet. Um, and then screening if new buildings are within a hundred fifty feet of existing buildings. Ten percent of the units are required to be affordable at eighty percent of the area meeting income. That's consistent with your current zoning. Um, that's the, your current zoning requires that any development over, I believe it's three units. Provides ten percent of affordable housing. Looking at site design. The development standards say that loop roads are preferred over dead end cul-de-sacs. Um, there needs to be a continuous network of sidewalks and path throughout the development. Buildings have to create a pedestrian scale, streetscape. The nice streets to walk along. Um, like the ones shown in the bottom right. Buildings should be grouped around common open space where possible. Um, sites should be designed to minimize impervious surfaces. Turning to open space and landscaping. Within the development area, there needs to be thirty percent open space. So that's in addition to the protected open space that. Outside of the development area. Um, shared open spaces are encouraged. All the open space within the. Development area has to serve a function, so it can't just be the leftover space, it's gotta be. Um. Have to be open space that's either doing something like. Making a nice place to hang out and eat lunch or providing wildlife habitat, et cetera. Um, native or low maintenance plants are required. And landscaping is you, has to be used to define outdoor spaces. Um, provide habitat or beauty or, or green storm or, or management. Um, there are a set of building types that are allowed. And other ones would not be allowed. So those are two family houses. Three to five family houses with massing like a manor house or farmhouse. Um, stacked flats, which are. Basically walk-up buildings where units are stacked on top of each other. And those are limited to between three and ten units. Then apartment buildings, which are buildings that generally have a. Central corridor with units off of that. Um, those are. Between eight and twenty four units. And then mixed use buildings, so. Buildings with commercial on the ground floor. And, um. And housing above. And those are limited to a certain distance within, uh, within a certain distance to Main Street. Um, the buildings themselves have a maximum allowed height of three stories. Um, all buildings must have a front entry facing a street or a shared open space. Um, no building can have a wall that's longer than fifty feet without a change in its wall plane. So the idea there is to break buildings up and make sure they are massive shoeboxes. And the same with roofs, roofs can't be longer than fifty feet without a variation of the roof plane or the height. Um, windows must be aligned predominantly vertically proportioned. Um, and no more than five types of windows on any given facade. Looking at parking requirements, um, there's a minimum of, of one point five spaces per unit required. Bike parking is required. All the parking areas have to be to the side, the rear or within buildings. Um, with the planning board able to waive that if it's unfeasible. Curb cuts are minim- have to be minimized, um, garage doors have to be set back behind the front facade of the building. Um, and no more than one third of a front facade can be occupied by garage doors. So these, um, these standards are basically. They're best practices that have been. Developed by planners, um. And tested in various places. Uh, for developing. Attractable, attractive, walkable. Um, projects. So. The next steps. Are to revise the zoning based on the public hearing. Um, and, and, and planning board input. To receive feedback from E O H L C, so there's a, uh. Regrading, oh no, regarding, um, preapproval re- review. So there's a, a process by which your zoning is reviewed by the state before you go to town meeting to make sure it's compliant with law. Um, and we expect to hear feedback on that by April second, which is coming up soon. Um, and then to finalize the zoning and to bring it to spring town meeting. On April twenty nine, where, um, the citizens can vote on whether they. Um, think it's a good idea or not. So that's, that's the end of the presentation. I thank you for your attention. I'll turn it back to the planning board.
Good, thank you Dylan, appreciate your, your comments and I, I know you'll be hanging out, there's some. Other technical questions and, and whatnot, uh, that, that may arise and there probably will be. Um. I'll first just ask if the board members would wish to make any comments, um. On, on there before we start to take.
I would just note, Brian, there are, uh, looks like at least four open seats if there are people who are standing, it's. For making.
So, um, ready to give a comment?
Yeah, just a, just a couple of things. Alright, I've been on the planning board for a couple of decades and I'm still learning stuff. Um. Lost count, okay. One of the things that was mentioned in the presentation that you might not understand, uh, just being a regular person like. Like I didn't understand very well. Is the concept of buyer rights. So when, uh, something is zoned to give a developer. The ability to do something fired right. That means that they don't really have to come before the planning board and get a special permit. Um, it gives them the ability to kind of streamline their project to do it quickly. Um, they still have to comply with environmental laws, there are other things that they have to comply with, but they don't have to come to the planning board. And request a special permit, so that's what buyer right means. Uh, I. I try not to spend that much time on Facebook because, uh, you know, your emotions can get high. And, uh, I make a conscious effort not to. To respond. On Facebook, uh, for a bunch of different reasons, but I did see some of the conversation about this on Facebook and I think. I think their. Emotions were running high because people didn't understand what the whole deal is. So I just want to say that, uh, each of us is elected to this position. And as an elected official. Uh, we have to take an oath that we will uphold the, the laws of Massachusetts. So it's, it's incumbent upon us ethically. To try to comply with the laws that are presented to us. That fall within our kind of sphere of planning board stuff and this landed squarely in our labs. Before the law was finalized, we were. When we saw what the original proposals were, we were pretty outraged. And we let Massachusetts know why we thought this was unfair to West Newbury. We don't have a train station here. Barely have any buses come through here. Um. We like the idea of losing, lowering housing costs and yeah, we. Personally, I'd like to have more young families in town and that sort of thing, but. This seems clumsy at best, heavy handed. Now, these are my words, I must be pushing the board here. Anyway, we let them know. Uh, and they're, you know, our, our public water system is, is kind of stretched thin as it is. And fire flows are always a concern. So we expressed our objections, as did a lot of other communities. And what eventually became the law is different now than what was originally proposed. And in a lot of ways, frankly. It's less bad. Or it's, it's better. Um, it doesn't mean that, um, we necessarily like it. Um, but. There would be very. In my view, heavy consequences should we just decide not to do it. And we, you know, there's an example out there now in Milford where they. They had, they had something and it was voted down. And, uh, and there are different deadlines. Um, and ours, ours in this, you know, I saw this, our, we don't have to comply. Right now. But the thing is, we know this is hard. And there are all these review things and we, we value. Believe it or not, we really do value the input that we get from everybody and we, we try, we're trying to do our best here. And if we waited until the last minute and then it got voted down, then we would be non-compliant and God knows. What would happen to us and start paying taxpayer money to pay for lawyers and litigation at the same time that we lost all kinds of revenue. I mean, it'd be nasty. So that's why we're trying to get on top of things and that's why we're talking about doing something as soon as we're talking about doing it. So I wanted to say that. And yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, he, he must have been reading my notes, I mean, I.
Oh, is he alright?
He's an amazing guy, the, the professor Brian, so. Recently retired from my UNH engineering school, although I think he's still involved in saying regarding up there. Um, so, uh, I think it's best if we open it up for questions and, and, you know. We'll all kind of flush this out together and, and, uh, hopefully we can answer. Concerns, we have Dylan available and, uh, what, and I should ask, Anne, did you want to say anything at all?
Uh, just to note that there are a few questions in the chat too.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll, we'll get to that, but we'll start here, so. Who, who would like to start up? And, and it'd be good if you could identify yourself. Do we need an address or not?
The, the tradition is name and address.
Well, but only twenty five costs in your. I've been living here a short time, only thirty seven minutes. I heard from. There's not going to be any cost to the taxpayers. All I know is in the last three years, my taxes have gone out of the roof. Who's gonna pay for the extra police that's needed? Where are we gonna get the water? I mean, there's a sign that goes up April first. Minimal use of water. Who's gonna pay for the new school? A school's gonna be a lot. How is new children? Does anybody take that into consideration? It's gonna cost us, our taxes will double when this happens. Does anybody have any figures with all these extra costs? We'll probably have to go to a full-time fight department next. Does anybody have any answers for what it's gonna cost?
Basically, no, we, we, we don't.
Don't you think the township might be cheaper to hire a lawyer to join the other five towns in the fighting us?
So I've been here about the same time you've been here, I came in ninety five. And, um, I came from northern Illinois. And the little town I grew up in, when I, when my family moved there, there were three hundred people in the town. Um, and it's got sort of swallowed up by the suburbs of Chicago and it, it breaks my heart to go back there. Because all the open fields and the streams I used to run, the farms, I used to. Like all middle school kids get into trouble and kind of find old abandoned farms and things, it was great. And it's changed character. One of the reasons I'm on the planning board of this town is because I want, I felt a duty to do what I could. Um, so these sorts of growing pains. Would happen. Whether or not. Additional housing units happen in West Newbury through this stuff or just the way it's been happening since I've gotten there. Little bits and pieces have been taken up, we've seen lots of little developments. Ideally. When, uh, new people move in, they pay taxes and that additional revenue covers the additional expenses. In schools and police and fire, it's a legitimate concern. And it's an intangible thing to try to get exact numbers of what it's gonna cost us and. Whether our taxes would go up or go down over time. Yeah. You, we can make projections, but it's like trying to predict interest rates and the Fed and the like.
I've been here since nineteen eighty six and the town was small, just like Illinois.
Yeah.
The taxes are never going down, so let's, that's a fairy tale. Alright, but don't you think we should project? Not everybody's gonna have a kid. But I'm sure if you figure out for a unit, maybe one and a half kids, you wanted to average it out, where are these kids gonna go?
Yeah.
And what, what about the crime? I worked alarm force with my whole career.
Yeah.
Okay, and I see what happens from these housing developments. That's why I moved my family here. To get away from all that.
Yeah.
I never locked my door until recently.
Yeah, when, when the house we bought, the front door lock didn't work.
So, I mean, yeah, I think the planning board, the powers to be, to get some hard figures. There's an average of how many kids per unit. And not, and like I say, not every unit's gonna have any.
Yeah.
And where are these people, you know, low income? We're gonna move migrants into town next. And I know that's not the right thing to say.
Low income housing, sir, this is multi-unit housing.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've tried, we've tried to do things on that, uh, but we've tried to encourage small units, less than fifteen hundred square feet. Covering, this would be something that we could do as a town. To cut down prices, you'd think that a smaller place would cost less money. But over the years since we sort of encouraged that, we've seen these small units come on, they're still six hundred.
Jennifer wanted to listen to the comments.
Is that, do people are in there right now?
It's live.
Yeah, and then, yeah. We, we also, I also wanted to mention, you know, uh, uh, places like Ocean Meadow, it's fifty five and over. And there's an idea there that, well, you know, all these nice older folks. Move in there and they're not gonna have kids to send to the school system and the town will be ahead in revenue. But then you end up with a town that's starved of children, me personally, family, children, paid school, I think it's wonderful. So. It's, it's, it's tough and you're right, you know, this is a political hot potato, it's very upsetting to people. I don't think you can get. Our numbers that will tell you.
Well, there should, there should be some sort of. An amount that, a speculation. What the state's gonna give us, what it's gonna cost us.
The only thing that we know that's written down by law is that if we don't comply. We're gonna lose money from the state, that's for sure.
How much money are we losing for the state?
Well. Uh, I don't know if anybody's run the number, but.
Newbury, uh, has. Had about three million dollars in state grants, I was reading something. We just got state money to help buy the Sawmill Brook property. We get a lot of aid from the state.
What are we getting from the state for infrastructure? Buying property. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't help?
We're not proposing buying the property at this point, sir, we're all, all we're doing is we're opening a door. For it to be developed in a new way. For it to be developed in a new way that will create housing. But we can't answer those questions, the developer who's going to be building this hasn't come around. In forty years of my selling real estate in West Newbury, we never had. A project jammed down our throats and this isn't being jammed down our throats, this is a doable number. In a couple of sites that were very carefully examined before these were brought before you. Um, as possible places where we could. Give our teachers and our firefighters and the nurses and the people who work in town. When I moved here forty eight years ago, everybody who worked in this building lived in town, who can afford to do that today? So we're hoping that older people can stay here, that they've got maybe a unit that they don't have to look after the landscaping. We hope that new families will come here, but it's going to be a mixture of, of housing. I, I really think that looking at crime, policing. Yeah, some of the issues you've raised are, are interesting, but we're not going to become Lawrence.
I'm not saying we're going to become Lawrence. More people that come to town, plus the housing, it, it, it just creates that atmosphere.
I don't think it does, I, I, we're. I haven't, apparently not.
Thank you for your comments, I should remind you that. The, the, the reality with septic capacity is enormous in this town. The, the two cottage developments um, are under thirty five units each. And that's probably on the high end of what these, it, it's not the eighty seven. And if one of the, whichever site is ultimately selected and that, that, that will be up to the board to make a recommendation. If a developer should come in, we meet the state's criteria then. And if we designate a site and nothing is ever built, we meet the state's criteria. It, it is not a guarantee that something's going to happen, but I think. In, in your mind, you really should be thinking, you, we should be thinking it's, it's a thirty to thirty five unit maximum. Versus the eighty seven out there, um, that the state requires and it's. It's a bit of a shell game with the state and how they're doing this, you know? It, it is frustrating trying to look at what their requirements are. Um, and then how we, we are going to meet them and, and because we don't have. Um, sewer systems, um, that actually plays in our favor. Um, the, the Merrimack games probably new report, they're, they're all facing. A hundred plus units and they will get built because, or could get built because they have sewer systems. Question in the back.
Sure, um, Perry Quandray, seven Merrill Street. Um, I'm one of the abutters and I wasn't notified if this is happening, I don't believe anybody from Merrill Street was notified. Um, this is behind uh, NAPS Nursery. We, we, we run parallel to NAPS Nursery, down the slope of the field. Uh, our water table is pretty high as it is. And now you're talking about building a, a large construction area here where there would be runoff down into the wetland, down in the corner, down in the back of our property. And you're now talking about um, septic tanks, so you could septic systems for thirty plus units. I mean, I think you're saying eighty seven in total, but it would, you'd have to have a sewer system put in for that, or.
Well, let me just clarify. Doing a, a private sewer system for that number doesn't test out economically, those are ninety million dollar.
You're talking about septic, but then if it's septic, you would have, I think what I've heard, thirty something units of septic.
You know, you know, I said, we all know our soils here in town, some are a little better than others depending where you live.
Right, and then I, I'm just curious, why weren't we notified?
Because there's no newspaper anymore.
No, no newspaper, we get a mailing if somebody builds a porch on our street.
Yeah, I hope that you subscribe to the.
Yes, I, I want to, I want to respond to the gentleman's question about notification, this is not a project that's being built. This is a zoning uh, proposal. And uh, there's, I don't believe there's a required notification, you know, everyone in town is affected by zoning proposals, it's not a development proposal.
But this, this is going to change the whole neighborhood as well, I mean, you're, you're talking about. Thirty something units with septic being built into this area where it all slopes down. It all slopes down, so where would be the road, you talk about a road, I saw the, I saw the photo that. Where the houses are, that's on the side of the slope into the wetland. So I don't know how you reviewed that property. Um, the other question I did have, there's a line for this too, is. I looked on the website for the state and it says it has to be. It cannot be located more than a half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal or bus station. We don't have any of those within a half.
Yes, I think if you saw it on the early, on the very early screens, the state has four designations of communities. We are a adjacent small community. We are adjacent to those. Um, and rail or commuter options, you can drive fifteen minutes. More or less and, and be on a train in either April or new report. Um, and maybe it depends on what area town you're in, maybe it's a little more than fifteen minutes. Um, but then that designation is from the state. Our original uh, requirements from the state before we, when this first came out was for several hundred units of housing. And we said, well, we don't, we don't have anything, as we just mentioned. They created this new tier of adjacent small communities, that's why we have had their cap of eighty seven.
Well, we're not within a half mile.
That, that's, that's on for major communities that have a station in their town. And that's.
It said for, it said for anybody who's a, a small adjacent town, there's no minimum land requirement. But it doesn't say anything about it, it, it says it cannot be more than a half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, bus station, they're pretty clear on that. I mean, was that reviewed?
That was a mandate to be if applicable.
I'm sorry.
That was a mandate to be if applicable.
Is there a bus that comes through town?
Well, it drives in the one thirteen, I don't think it. Your, your points will take.
I don't understand how it's. Especially with the fact that if you look at Merrill Street, which runs parallel, we weren't notified, we should have been notified on something like you're going to change the zoning of the property right next to us. And on top of that, Bill, if you look at the septic and that coming down into the wetland there, we, we have like, the whole street has a high water table. And anytime there's been development of other houses in the neighborhood, our water table keeps, seems to be going higher.
Yeah, I want to address what you're saying, I also see a comment online that somebody put in and, and they, they asked, you know, what, what pits. What test pits have been done, so let me just jump back and emphasize. The law requires us to provide this zoning. One of the ways we can do it is by an overlay. After a lot of really serious study, it's come down to like, these two sites are the most likely sites, okay? If we pass the zone, it does not mean anything will be built. If you're a developer, you got X number of bucks, you want to build stuff, sell it and make your profit. Pay off everybody, pay off your crews, subcontractors, all that stuff. And come away with more money than you would have gotten by investing in the stock market or something else. That's what, that's what you're betting on, you want to make money, you want that return on investment. So you have to take a look, if you got this money, you can look at Newbury or you look April, and you can look at West Newbury. Now you gotta, now you break out your spreadsheet and you're like, okay, how much is the road going to cost? How much the utility is it going to cost? How much is the septic system going to cost? How much is running all these test pits going to cost me? What about complying with the health department, all this nice stuff? You put it all in your spreadsheet and you see whether or not you're going to make that return on investment in West Newbury. That exceeds what you would make in Newbury or in all these other communities, right? Now, we can see in town, some developers have run their spreadsheets and figured they could make a profit and so we got Ocean Meadow, we got a few others. We have a few other developments that. Developers have come in and, and they figure they, they made a fair profit. The chance that somebody would come into either of these properties and build them out to the limit. To um, is like minuscule because of the septic system. And even with thirty seven units, you've got to have all those soils tested properly. And then, and then you've got to comply with all the health requirements. It ain't going to be easy and if you look at the layouts, I didn't see big spaces for those septic systems in those layouts either.
One last thing, and I'm interrupting, I, I realize, if you look at those single family houses that were in the next pretty picture. I didn't see what would, would have been the larger scale. Right, units, because it said fifteen units, minimum fifteen units per acre.
Well, so, so the fifteen units per acre that's imposed upon us by the state, what would actually get built? Would depend on what the developer figures the developer can make money doing, right? So whether they, you know, try to do a building with a lot of units in it, they're dense. Now, we have a little control on things like setbacks and part and stuff, it was part of the presentation. You still got to make that profit. And it's not going to be easy, if for example, they just, they want to come in and develop something and they find out the fire flows aren't going to be adequate. Then it's on the developer to uh, to change the piping and whatnot now, so the fire flows are, that's expensive. Um, when it comes to the, to the water table, water table in West Newbury. It, anywhere in the world, water table is a complicated issue and, you know. Weather is changing, we've seen storms that we've never seen before and basements have flooded that have never flooded before. That's happened all around town. The engineering is required so that theoretically, according to the numbers, the best science that you can apply. That the amount of water leaving the site after the development is done. And the rate which leaves the site is the same as what it was before, now that's true whether or not, that's true all around the state, whether or not there's a. Dense development or not. Theoretically, if you do all the civil engineering properly and it's signed off by state engineers and stamp and all that kind of stuff. It, it won't affect the water in your basement, it won't dry up a nearby well. It won't make something wet that doesn't wet before. Now, does that always happen? No, because you're, you're doing engineering, most of the time it's right, maybe sometimes it doesn't get right. So I think you've got legitimate concerns, I'm not trying to say you don't have legit, you do. But the idea behind these developments, if they were ever to get built. Or other developments in town is that um, you don't have an adverse effect. On the neighbors with respect to water. Now, will there be adverse effect to the character of the neighborhood? Uh, will some people see stuff from their backyard they didn't see before, will some people lose viewscapes? Uh, could it change the kind of birds that show up at your feeder?
I'm not, I'm not talking about the feeling piece, it's, it's a water table. The water that runs down the hill there has been, even in the past twelve years, has continued to rise. In that area because it doesn't flow into the back into the pond that it's supposed to.
Stormwater, okay, well, so if, you know, NAPS has been napped for a long time. Um, so if things have been changing over time, that's not due to.
I'm not blaming that on NAPS.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not blaming, I'm, I'm saying you're going to develop a property that you're going to have housing units.
If the property is developed, civil engineering has to be done, signed off by the state. And there's stamp, professional engineer and all that kind of stuff for stormwater runoff calculations. Those stormwater runoff calculations are very complex and sometimes you have to have holding ponds and then there's infiltration and then there's underground piping systems and all this kind of stuff. And in the end, things shouldn't change for the abutters and for the neighbors. Now, I appreciate the fact that you can be very skeptical of that stuff, I do. Uh, but the idea anyway, and a lot of money and effort will be put into that. That kind of cost goes into the developer's spreadsheet. And it dissuades developers from, from building these kinds of developments. We are not developing land, we are not buying land. We are putting zoning that allows a developer to come in. And if the developer's spreadsheet works out, they can come forward with a plan. That has to go through a number of hoops, but it also gets to skip some of the hoops that, that. That's the whole buyer right thing. And you know, we have other buyer rights, you have duplex by right in West Newbury. And you drive around, you, you drive around, you see there's some duplex houses here and there, but it's not like everybody's always building a duplex. That's, so, that's the whole buy right.
Let's do another question here, then we'll see who on, online has got a question, so. There's two here, what are we going to do then?
Uh, I'm Dave, I'm also on Merrill Street, so I appreciate the comment about the water table. Because I have only been here two years and I have not exactly helped, I mean, with NPR gets, so. Appreciate that, so just like a hypothetical. It's an overs, what I understood, it's an overlay district. That doesn't mean anything has to be built, we just have to allow it by zone. Well, okay, it'll be built, not capacity built. Does that also mean somebody else can develop like single family units on the house? And in which case, would that make us noncompliant to the law eventually because the zone is not advised?
One point, uh, once that is zoned, it's done and the state says, good job, West Newbury, thank you, we go on to somebody else. If the owner of the property decides, well, I'm not getting, I mean, the offer is that, you know, I want or whatever. And I want to build four, five homes that help things, you go right ahead, the state doesn't come back to us and say, you got to go through this thing again.
So I'm going to go over there as a mandate, it has to.
No, 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 so I'll go back to the fellow in front and then we will, we will.
Thank you, sorry, um, I was going to ask you. Sorry, Eric Rogers. I was going to ask you, uh, because I will be similar to Daily Drive, I think his comment suggested it would not be. Because it would not be a single family, you know, Daily Drive is about thirty buildings.
Yes.
That are about thirty bedrooms each.
No, there's, it's more twos than threes and a few singles in there.
Yeah, there's some, like, there's some.
Or like high level aesthetically. Again, we can't predict.
Somebody could do that, somebody, somebody can come in and say, you know, I don't want to do thirty because my numbers don't work. But I can do twelve and, and you know, I can do this building with four units and, and I can lay it out this way and whatnot. And they might do that. Or somebody might come in and say, you know, I'm going to put one fricking mansion on here. Boom, two million dollar home and I'm out of there, you know, I got it, I got it.
If it's on the area that was zoned, we comply.
Thanks.
Okay, so do we have some questions on virtuals?
A virtual question? This, so would they change, uh, Jonathan is on Nathan Street, so I bought gun. You talk about MBTA, we have a bus that just drives through and wherever they're going, but. Say this comes to fruition, does that mean they're going to open up MBTA? Stations, bus terminals? There's no, there's no. Say, oh, by the way, we got eighty seven units here, we're going to park a new bus station.
No, 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 not like that, and frankly.
They're right, they do.
Do what?
Well, if you're getting closer with rail or bus.
Well, we are. Sure we are.
I want to, I'm living there because I need to be close to whatever.
You, you decide to live there because, you know, you can get this place for five hundred thousand dollars and it's your dream home or whatever it is. Right, I mean, you make the decision based on a lot of stuff.
But there's no fine print from the state to say that.
If you wanted to be that close to the train, you'd buy it, uh, the apartments in the building, you can have built. There, there is no fine print now, it's, it's a state, so who the hell.
Traffic studies as well.
A development.
The state doesn't consider that at all.
Keep it down a little bit, by the way, any developer would have to do a traffic study and make sure that the number of vehicles entering the. Development, leaving, that everything would be safe and they have to consider.
They do that though, so if you say eighty seven units.
It's not, it's not going to be eighty seven units, it's going to be thirty to thirty five. No one will build a treatment plant for eighty seven.
I, I know, I'm just saying. There's just a lot of like to what the gentleman said, there's a lot unknowns, there's a lot of costs that only is considering. Other than, you know, it's just more along the line of the state is going to come down on us hard. That's it.
Don't, don't say that nobody is considering this thing, we, we, we're considering, we've been considering this stuff from day one. And you know, fairness has been, and this first came up and we were talking about this, this was before the study with the maps and all that kind of stuff. We're like, well, what's fair? And you know, as soon as you pick out. And, you know, as soon as you pick out one spot, right? Then everybody around that spot, well, this is unfair burden on us, this is changing maybe my property values. And yet, somebody on South Street doesn't affect them at all, how is this fair? And, you know, we actually, I, I, I'll confess, they're like, well, the way to make it fair is to just apply the whole day on town. Everybody has to deal with this burden. But then as soon as you get into the details, no, that's not gonna work, because then you could have. Thousands of units built by right. So, so if, and then, and then there's the whole concept, like, I like the concept of school teachers being able to stay in town. I like the concept of having affordable houses, I didn't pay eight hundred thousand dollars for my house when I came here in ninety-five. Right? I like that, so philosophically, I like it. But I, I set a bunch of that stuff aside and come to the conclusion that what we need to do now. Is the minimum that we have to do to comply with the law. And so that means picking a small area where you put this hole in. And then you comply with the law, whether or not anything actually ever gets built. Um, and, and is that an unfair burden on the abutters?
Yeah. Cause out of the butter, I mean, yeah.
It sounds great if I live on.
Right, that's right, and, and.
But, but I, I, I will say, how would you, you know, that land is going, it, we just want NASS. That land has been on the market.
There are valid offers out there that are not getting to the owner, I'm just gonna say that right now.
How would they have anything to the owner?
Because being managed by a developer, that is not.
Well, I, 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 I don't know that.
So just build three houses on it, you don't need to build thirty.
Four, five, we had proposals before, it's on that land, for four, I blew four homes a number of years ago. And, and it didn't happen for.
Well, I, I don't know. I don't know how you make an offer on a piece of land.
Yeah, let, let's, let's, we'll get back to you, okay? I, I feel guilty, I haven't talked to anybody in. I can't see that.
So there's a number of chat comments, uh, no one online has their hand up, but if people, you know. Online do wanna raise their hand, or we have, okay, we see that.
Is that Alex?
It is.
Thank you, go ahead, Alex.
So. I am one of the only three lifelong residents of Merrill Street. Um, my neighbors, the, um, the Willises and my family name are the only three that still survive on this street. I grew up here as a kid, and that pond in the wetlands that you're saying is gonna be open space. To cluster all these houses into one little area, used to be about a two acre pond. It is now about thirty acres, if not maybe, maybe a little less. You are not allowing the water to go anywhere, so where's it gonna go in the future? You, you built houses on the Parker property on, in West Newbury, up on the hill, with a. Proposal to manage the runoff. I personally spent six hours shoveling one thirteen for six inches of dirt that your town failed to manage. So don't tell me that you have a plan or have some sort of plan to manage the stormwater runoff, because there isn't one. It's, it's clear and active. Nope, let me finish. Second thing, you're proposing an eighty-something plus unit, but now you're saying thirty. So what is it? Is it thirty or is it eighty? All it takes is a person with money. They'll put eighty in there if they want to. You're saying thirty, but if they wanna put eighty, they'll put eighty if they can figure it out. There's a way to do it and they will figure it out. This is one of the smaller pieces of land in town with some of the higher number of units available that you're trying to propose. You're beckoning to the state so you don't lose your funding. My road was slated to be paved two years ago, it's still not paved. So don't tell me you don't have the money, you have the money, you're just not spending the money. So don't tell me, and don't come back and say, well, we're looking at it, we're trying to do this, we're trying to do that, that's great, that's town politics, that's how, that's how it works, I get that. Figure it out and then come back and tell us what you wanna do, because right now, the house next to me, the two houses down the street. They all are underwater, what are you gonna do about that? Perry Conrad has an, a, a, an absolute argument about his water in his backyard. He's losing acreage, the house at the end of my street, the McInnises, they're losing their farm status possibly because of wetland violations. So what are you gonna do about that? You wanna put it up on Dunn's property, go put it up on Dunn's property, what are you gonna do about that, runoff? What are you gonna do? Where's it gonna go? What's the traffic? You're not thinking clearly, you're thinking about bringing people into a small community. To make it Wakefield, to make it Lynnfield, to make it bigger. You're beckoning to the state to bring people out here to make it what you guys feel is comfortable, not what we want.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
Hi. Mike, we have another. My doctor has raised the hand.
Yes. Mike?
All right, um, I have a couple of questions. One, um, can the planning board include in their zoning a requirement that the roadway remain private? Um, in addition, that it require that, uh, the developer be required to take care of trash pickup? Is that something we could put in the bylaw?
I, um. I don't know offhand, uh, if that is getting too detailed for the state, but that's. Next, that's a question maybe Dylan can answer, do you have any comments on that, Bill?
Yeah, I can answer the second one, you can't require trash pickup. Um. I can tell you that because another community I'm working with tried to do that and we're told they, they can't. Um, so you can't have requirements that were these uses that are not required of other uses in your town. And that's one that would be considered that. Um. In terms of it being required to be a private road. Um. I don't have an answer for that one, but we can look into it and get back, you know, get back to you.
Can we, can we have a zoning bylaw require that the roadway be built to subdivision standards?
It does do that, yeah, it currently does that.
Yeah.
And, um, second is that you guys haven't mentioned, but I do believe that this, any development would be subject to site plan approval.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, yeah, so when, when Ray was talking earlier about as of right development, so. The use is allowed by right, but the planning board can review the site plan and impose reasonable conditions on the site plan. Um, and so the development standards that are in the zoning, as, as I outlined, there are a lot of them, are designed to give the planning board. Um, some, some teeth in their review of the site plan.
So they would be able to address things like drainage and site plan and roadway, some of the concerns that people have?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
One more, they're gonna come back to the room, okay? There are no way to see there, any questions? If you wanna raise their hand or just shout out? No, okay, we'll, we'll come back, don't worry. Uh, next, there was woman on the back.
Jamie Penzi, I'm on Molton Street, um, I agree that even though this isn't, um, set in stone yet, and this is a zoning. This is a pass for zoning, I think it opens up so many unknowns, and I just wanted to read you something. The, um, Cape and Political Action Committee is coming around to, um, a number of towns, they can come to West Newbury if there's enough interest. To get them here to run the tax numbers of our town. Um, this gives you a little sense of Boxford, these are some Boxford numbers, and I think it's helpful to just as we're disseminating this information, just really. Making sense of, okay, if we get this zoning pass, yeah, eighty-seven might not get approved, but it could. I think that's the scary part, it could, and we don't know what this is going to do to our schools, to the world, all of that. So in Boxford, um, they get, um, two point seven million in state aid. And of that, likely no more than two hundred fifty thousand comes from the form of state grants. Which is what the state can withhold if the town doesn't comply with the MBTA zoning. So, the town runs the, this is Boxford, obviously not, no, not West Newbury, so we know it's not apples and apples. But, um, the town runs the risk of losing two hundred fifty thousand in state grants, but avoids the tax head. That could come with children in schools in the town. If Boxer, if Boxford built, the state required, uh, two hundred ninety family units. Each unit had one child at an estimated cost of twenty-two K to educate that child. The tax hit to the town would be close to six point four billion. So you lose two hundred fifty thousand and you save six point four million. The figures could be different and a little bit more nuanced for different towns, so I understand we want to follow the law. It seems like there's a lot of fear mongering around, like, what happens if we don't follow? Like, this is, this is state law, well, there is another route, there is another route, we can say no, we can get the fines, because it might in the end. Save us from some potential, a million different directions that this could go, and we don't know, we're not being told. You know, oh, it could be this, it could be that. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, that there is another route, this is something that could be voted down, acted to save. A slippery slope of, we don't know, of the unknown.
Brian?
Excuse me, we'll get back to you over there. Ben?
Yeah, Brian, I want to point out a couple of things, I believe that Boxford's, I, I, that comparison is, um, quite misleading. I believe Boxford is required to do something like four hundred and some units, so those numbers for schools are. Nowhere near in the realm of West Newbury, and I do want to emphasize that this, these are market rate units. Every time someone builds a new house or a new subdivision with three or five or eleven houses. We don't worry about the children that they're bringing in, each one of these units that could conceivably be, be built would be a tax paying unit. And, uh, you know, revenue would be generated for things like police and schools and so forth.
Thank you. Um.
And on that topic, typically multifamily housing produces a lot fewer children than single family housing does. A lot fewer.
In the back, somebody?
Yeah, it's a different economy, you know.
And the state says this is to, to build for families.
Yes.
It's not for elderly, it's not for that, it's to build for families, so.
No, I, we, we, you, you're correct, it's.
For you.
That's the theory of, of, you know, more of these and freeing up some other housing.
It's, it's, it's free market, right?
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
Wendy?
I have a question for Dylan.
Yes, go ahead.
Dylan, on the map that you showed in the beginning, it looks like for the nap property, some of that land was excluded land, it was green. And I was just wondering whether the total acreage of the parcel is being used or just the non-excluded land.
So the excluded land is, is something the state uses to calculate whether your district is large enough? Um, and so, there's enough land on that site outside of their designated excluded lands. To have a compliance zone.
So the development area would be a subpart of the overall parcel.
Okay.
And any, any buildings would have to be in that, yeah, it's very much like our open space preservation.
Hi, Philisunder, twelve Maple Street. Um, my property, um, is right adjacent to the Dunk Farm, and we'll have the exact same effect as each gentleman. We're at the bottom of the hill, and right now it's a nice bomb, and water's being absorbed and all that kind of stuff. And so my concern is that after construction is done and all that, is that water gonna come tumbling down? And what is the developer gonna do to prevent that? Also, I'm entitled, yes, entitled, to the quiet enjoyment of my home. And I really don't think that sticking a few shrubs one hundred fifty feet away from my house is gonna prevent a lot of noise. So there's also noise to be considered and lighting. I don't need, I mean, again, I grew up in miles like the showman. I scratched my way to get out of here for twenty-eight years, so I could come somewhere like this, and I don't deserve this. I really don't think that you can fit a square peg in a round home. And as it said up there, that we are adjacent small town, and that's what we are. We're a small town, we're not a city.
Thank you, thank you.
Twelve Maple Street, my Willis.
Yes.
And, uh, I'm from Lawrence, I'm fourth generation immigrant. My grandfathers and grandmothers were all persons, second generation immigrant, they never worked their way out of Lawrence. My father was third generation, and he worked his way out of Lawrence by the time he was my age. I worked my way out of Lawrence sooner. But we all worked our way out of Lawrence, because we know what living in an urban environment means. Anyone tells you, it won't be like Lawrence. If it's an urban environment, it will be like Lawrence, trust me.
Same here.
Hi, Michael Magger, six, six Maple. Um, I just have a couple of questions, so. Uh, I think a lot of people could agree that they wanna see some numbers as far as like potential increases that, um. I've worked in Boxer on the fire department, I know at one period of time, the, um, town screwed up with the state and lost funding. Um, losing the state funding doesn't mean that you lose funding, there's always the means to go through the federal government. Um, it would seem that like one of the bigger issues, we'll just say like one thirteen for state repair, you can go through the federal government. So I'm just wondering, like, what is the planning board of the town look at to say, this is where we're getting state funding? Take a look at that and say, we'll lose it, but then we can get from the federal government. Since there's the avenue to go down that road, it is harder to do, but it's possible. Because I did work with fire department accomplishing, get things that the state was telling us, no, but the federal government said, yes, we'll give it to you. My second question would be is, um, traffic concerns. Um, I've seen just with the recent developments, um, of some of the new towns. I've been on Maple for twelve, thirteen years, when I first came in, it wasn't that concern, other than potential rush hours. It seems like now every other student on Maple has young kids. You're gonna increase potentially with developments, more traffic. They're gonna go down Maple and they're gonna cut through down Ash Street, Ash Street's been closed for months. When I first moved in, I was told, it only gets closed maybe for a small period of time. What is the town looking at to say, we're gonna adopt a mandated townwide minimum of twenty-five mile per hour unless posted otherwise? Or we're gonna be looking at shutting down Ash Street as a cut through, but on the other side, okay, that's great for me on Maiden Street. But that's bad for the other town, so those are just some of the concerns that I haven't heard brought up that I have.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Uh, thanks, Perkato, Indian Ridge Road. Um, I, all right, so I think everyone brought up a bunch of concerns, it sounds like there's some numbers that folks wanna hear. Um, let's assume we end up going through with it and we have to do it. My question is more on the proactive side of things, and that, is there an ability for us to kind of. Proactively find a developer who we're interested in working with to do something like. Building units for people who wanna work on farms that maybe we haven't been able to actually find people to do, where they could be learning and training in those areas. Are there developers who are actually building places for a specific skill set or folks who we want to be coming into our town? Are there proactive things we could do to kind of direct things, so that all the unknowns that we're talking about. Um, we actually have some more control over what does go in there versus us, you know. Kind of saying, I understand what, I appreciate what all of you are saying on how hard it might be, I think we need to assume that we're talking about this as if it gets built, right? Like, we're not, we're not approving something to them and say, well, all of these things are gonna get to the developers, because they're not gonna make enough money. We have to assume we're gonna build something there, right? And so my question is, what options do we have or can we explore out of the town to actually make sure that we feel better about what's going in there? So that if it is something where we're concerned about drainage, all of us are, I am basically on a red clay hill on Indian Ridge Road. We spend all of our money, it feels like on drainage all of the time, so here you. Um, and yeah, I would probably feel the same way if I had a development going in my back that was potentially gonna cause more. But my question is, there's tons of developers doing tons of different work out there, and is there a way, if something goes through and passes. That we can proactively in the town kind of be working towards, maybe courting a developer, we want to come in there and build something differently than just like units for unit sake.
Well, um, I, I would say first, that, that isn't a role for the planning board to, to get involved. With trying to find a developer, okay, that just isn't our, our, you know, the, the role we take. Um, I, I like some of your comments, there's, there's an affordable housing trust in town here. That might benefit from your compassion and input. I, I like some of your comments. There's an affordable housing trust in town here that might benefit from your compassion and input. And, and you didn't mention affordable, but you talked about groups and whatnot, then maybe there's an offshoot or something there. And I, I know they're, they're tasked with looking at affordable components, but I, I think you raise a good idea. Um, we probably have to come from, I, I, it's somebody other than. We're, we're mandated under state regulations. We, we can't go hunting for developments. For a group charter like the Forest Trust or another housing entity, um, might be perfect for what you're suggesting.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is like a feeling of helplessness and people feeling like something's wrong.
I, I hear you and, and I appreciate it. It's, it's an excellent idea and, and. Yeah, or, or we're thinking.
I, I, I appreciate taking proactive approach too. But I have to point out now that, uh, so on the planning board. We can't show favor to.
Understood, for sure.
Yeah, we, I think, I think there have been undertones like that, you know, maybe we're in the pocket of somebody or there's kickbacks and all that kind of stuff. I, I wouldn't be able to sleep. I don't sleep at night that well anyway. Uh, we, you know, we. We're allowed to take, I think, a gift of fifteen dollars a year or something from somebody and, and I, we don't do that. But you say, you, you can see how if, if we were courting a developer in town as the planning board. That there might be another group of people in town who are like, ah, and you know, we don't want that developer. We prefer this one over here. And then so like, I mean, you, you go to the building department, building inspector, they're not allowed to recommend an electrician. Even though they work with electricians all the time, they know the good ones and bad ones. They can't recommend an electrician to you because that would be.
This could be a very silly question, but do we, could you put the overlay on either property and the town buy that piece of property?
Oh, Dylan knows about that. Dylan?
He's saying no.
Yeah, the short answer is no.
Can a bunch of people get together and buy that piece of property?
Now that's what they did on Puffin Street.
There's a version that you really want to save it, you buy, I'm not, I'm not saying right, whatever.
The neighbors, the neighbors in Greenbelt got, you know, bought that property. And we've protected a lot of beautiful property.
No, and I, and I agree. And that's kind of what I was thinking. I was like, the, the ones, the naps. I'm like, what was it on for sale? It was only, it was only one point. But one point five million.
Follins people's develop, people were very upset because he had that cornfield bit in town forever. He loved that cornfield, right? Vista and the look over the valley and all that kind of stuff. The neighbors were really upset. It wasn't my place to s- s- to suggest anything. I, I can't do that. But you know, if they got together and bought the property.
No, I, I didn't want to use the property for the Facebook property that's gone plan based it before I moved back here. After growing up here that I realized people are really passionate about the saving plan that wasn't ever there because they don't want.
And I'll point out that one of the, the sources of funding we get from the state is, what's the name of the community preservation? The CPC and some of that money is put specifically in an account for, for open space. And then there's a pool that you could draw from. So if, you know, if the town wants to buy land, they can buy it.
But they couldn't buy the overlay. But, but people can.
Yes. So, uh. One, one sec. Let's deal with a check comment, then we'll come back to, okay? Sorry, we just gotta be fair. Okay.
Been a lot of discussion about what happens if the town doesn't comply with the legislation. What is the benefit to the town and its residents if it's satisfied? Maybe Brian, I could read all of them and then you could guess, uh, some of them are more commentary than questions. If its area is to be zoned for housing as mandated by the state, can other developers then start building too? And the eighty seven homes increases exponentially or will the area as zoned be capped at eighty seven?
It's capped at eighty seven. And, and again, the eighty seven cannot be built without septic regulations in, in town. Unless this package treatment plant is built multimillion dollar expense. It will, can't be done eighty seven minutes. Economics.
Uh, this comment is, if it is zoned for this, can someone else buy it and build something else? I think you already spoke to that one. The answer is yes.
Yeah, subject to the underlying zoning.
Right. How many times will the state come back and ask for more land to be zoned for housing? Is this a one time request?
I don't know.
Oh, oh, can I say something with that? Because things are evolving. You know, let's say, let's say that there's so much fighting that goes on. Did they change the state law? Then we can change the zoning. In the future.
All right, any?
Uh, there's questions about, uh, uh, test pits and whether those are, uh, have been conducted or will those be conducted before, after?
By a developer only.
Uh, traffic studies and improvements to one thirteen.
Can, can it only be done by a developer?
Yes.
So we sit down, couldn't do that.
No desire. I, I will say the town could make a reasonable inference, you know, based on experience, so.
But is this, is it a town can't do that? Or it says we wouldn't do it because we wouldn't waste our money?
We, why would we do it?
Yeah, the town can't expand and don't perk. If you give what's that, what's that is the land that.
No, we, we could.
The town can't spend public money in private land, so unless the town actually had a purchase and a sale return.
We, we did look all over town, you know, these, these two were arrived at.
I guess what I'm getting at is find the land that actually could only support seven houses, but it's twelve acres, fourteen acres. And that's the land that. The overlay goes on because we know the developer can't commit to what fifty houses.
Yeah, and there, there is a, there is a point where the state comes in.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah.
The, uh, the other, uh, comments here, uh, will we be voting for this overlay for both properties or only one of them?
Uh, the vote is just for one.
Right, yes. And then there's a question about spot zoning and would, uh, would this be considered spot zoning?
Well, it's because it's under a state law, you know, that we're required to, to undertake this review. So I don't think it would be spot zoning.
Spot zoning is a loaded term and I, I've seen people cringe as soon as it's brought up. You know, I mean, this, this would be zoning that would be applied to a parcel, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, that interpretation is subject to. Spirit conditions, so.
Yeah, it, it, this spot zoning is a loaded phrase, you know.
Um, okay.
Kevin, thank you.
Uh, Kevin Bo for King of Maple Street. So first off, I really do want to, not a question, but a, a thank you to the planning board. I mean, you guys did not ask for this.
No.
So, and you know, you're the target of a lot of frustration. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and, and, and I'm gonna ask a silly rhetorical question. How do we stop the clock? How do we stop building houses in this town? You know, because I've lived here for twenty five years and, you know, I don't wa- I don't take my walk on Maple Street anymore. Because law of averages, you know, in terms of. And, and so, you know, I, I drive to the parks or whatever. So, you know, we've all seen the changes. And we've all lost, we've seen a lot of vistas, you know, lost. And it's frustrating to tell. You know, and, and it really takes away from what we're all about. But we, you know, time marches on. You know, if, if there will be something on the nap property and the Dunn property and I'm looking to the Dunn property. Well, I don't know if it's gonna be next year or twenty years, whatever, but there will be something there. And, you know, with the Dunn property, I think it's, I, I think it's gonna be there in ten to fifteen years. You know, I really don't think, you know, and, and, you know, maybe the nap could be potentially sooner. I know that. But, you know. We've got to, we've got to take control of what we see as our town. That's what we've been talking about tonight, you know? And, you know, what kind of town do you want? Do you, do you want, you know, the economics of nap with whatever? It's like four or five houses for two million each. Just like on Middle Street, you know, the, the vista there. Or it's, you know, thirty houses of like. Affordable eight hundred thousand dollars, right? That's what it's gonna be unless I am on the affordable housing committee. Unless we can get some affordable things in there for teachers, for whoever. So I, I, I guess, you know, yeah, my, you know, so my question is, is, you know, well, we don't want the answer to my question. We can't make it stop. We as a town have got to. Work together and make sense. That's all I.
No, thank you. That, that's, it's well put and it is ultimately frustrating for those of us who've been, I've been here forty years. Um, that, that enjoy the town. I've seen many changes, vistas lost, its growth. And yet I do welcome the new people that came in and, and, you know, it, they all add to an interesting fabric of the town. Um, but, but yes, there is frustration and, and the simple short answer is you can't just stop the, I mean, we'll be hauled into court. Federal and state sooner than, but just saying no more.
And, and my point is, we, we, you know, if we, if we go for the status quo, we will become a different town. We will never be the town, I hate to say it, the, the town I moved in and the town many of us moved into because, you know. I'm so, you know, what can you say about life, right? And, and, you know, so the town is gonna be different in ten years.
And yet how, how we manage that is what frankly this board has tried to do.
Right, and, and, you know.
And, and, and with a view towards trying to keep the, the, the rural character, but also.
Understanding it's gonna get built on.
I, I gotta jump in here. Because, because this is something I've wrestled with since I've been on the planning board. How do you do the right thing? But you have to respect people's property rights. So if, if, if I've got ten acres, it's been in my family for a couple of generations, right? And then, and then, I don't know, my parents' guy comes to us kids or something. I mean, you can't have the town, you know, it's not federal government, but it's still government. You had the town come to you and say, well, you can't put houses on that. You can't sell that land to a developer because we don't want you to do that. I mean, that's the only wholesome people have. So how do you balance person, people's personal wealth and property rights, right? Against the interest of the overall town? Maybe somebody on South Street doesn't want nap developed. Well, why does the person on South Street get to tell the people that own nap property, you can't sell the land? He can't do that. Right? I mean, it's a freedom of your own to do with your land when, when you want to within reasonable limits. Or what we've come up against is. Practical things like whether the land perks and access to the land and now driveways or a hundred thousand driveways. Cause you gotta get back to this little spot where you can put a single house because that's the only thing left in town.
Okay, uh, let's get another, uh, over. We haven't heard from you, I think.
Um, Peter Martins, I live at two on Main Street. And I'm not quite in the gutter, but kind of. Um, our land also floods. Um, but my biggest concern, aside from the flooding, because I appreciate and like my neighbors. Uh, is the traffic. And something was mentioned about the traffic, about the builder would deal with that. Well, that did not make me feel any better. Actually made me feel much worse. I don't know if anyone, um, has seen the traffic. To and fro, uh, from the high school and, you know, in the morning, you can't cross the street. It's crazy. I can barely pull out of my driveway. Um, and I'm only thinking, I'll forget about the eighty seven number. Thirty, maybe two cars per house, you know, like, well, that just jumps. You know, and the, and the amount of traffic back and forth, whether it's at nap, which will be my neighbor or at the Dunn. Like the, the amount of traffic as to the comment on Ash Street too, like if I go out in that direction too, like it's, it's nuts. You, and I recognize that we, towns have to grow. I get that. Um. I just, I, I need a better response than the builder has to deal with the traffic. Like, I don't trust that. Because it also sounds as if people that are interested in the property are not being upfront. And so therefore, that also does not, uh, make me feel any better about the traffic.
Once the builder leaves and everything's built, that owner's not sticking around to follow the cross law.
And, and just to add to like whatever I was saying, I moved here when I was one years old as a girl. And, uh, so I also have a lot for this town and. I get how the town was. I grew up here. This was my elementary school right here, okay? So I get it. But we have, we do have to recognize that we do need to grow because that's a reality. The world is growing. And, um, and I appreciate that you're trying to control how we grow as a town. Um, but I would appreciate also communications. Because I didn't know this until I ran into someone at the supermarket that mentioned that this meeting was happening. So, um, it's a shame we don't have a newspaper any longer. If, I wonder how we can communicate better to the community because, um, I am part of Facebook groups and whatnot. But I wouldn't have seen this if I had chosen to go to a different super than I get. So, uh, just back.
No, thanks. And, and I'll, I'll just second. I think that's one of the most frustrating aspects and, and, uh, for us to deal with. And, and on, on many levels of, how do you communicate well? And, and, and I think we'd all love to hear if somebody had a better idea. We, we all miss what was the daily news. And, but that's, that's a small town paper problem all across the country.
So we know the people who communicate in the town, but we just have to get that.
Our, our select may have something for you.
Yeah, I just want to point out that you can go to the town website and you can subscribe to use an announcement and you will get regular information. But it requires being somewhat proactive and that you have to sign up for it. We, we, we don't have everybody's email address in the town. And the last thing we want to do is we proceed to sending spam. So if you, if, I'm, you know, I'm serious, I'm not being.
Yeah, I, I, my question is, how do I get this information?
Go to the town website and subscribe and you can subscribe to. It in a variety of ways. You get the information that you want and.
Brooklyn is only three days ahead of time. It was on the board case when we took station seven.
And, yeah, and, and, and it's, it's good. It's, it's not the in-depth reporter story. I know. And for those days are gone. I, I, I just, I share your pain with that.
I think, yes.
Just one thing on the traffic. I think, I think it is important to say, we've talked a lot about the traffic because of the location of these parcels and that. You know, some, there's some obscuring at the entrances where they potentially be because there are, you know, there are turns and there are hills, you know, at these locations. So that's something that, you know, we have expressed a lot of concern about ourselves that this is like a single entrance to an already busy street. And, you know, you've got a turn or no, in case you get a lot of traffic at that turn street. So we, we spent a lot of time talking about that. And it's not that it, it doesn't get reviewed. It definitely does get reviewed in the design review process. And the state is involved as well because it's a state highway.
Well, the, um, the crosswalk at, uh, Merrill Street is not visible. Um, I have twice seen children almost hit.
Yeah.
And accidents as well. Uh, so that's just on the slight slope there. Is the, uh, the curve at nap.
Yeah.
Um, and I've spoken to the police officers, asked them to put out signs. They put out the signs, the sign gets run over. So it's just sort of this like weird cycle of how do we keep our kids safe from the street? There's a lot of kids that live down Merrill Street.
Right, right.
And in that neighborhood. So, um, I would like that considered as well in this whole process. Like, how, how are we gonna deal with that happening? The to and fro from. You know, the, the property that's napped or if it's done, the same thing. To this, to the train station that we keep talking about or the, the freeway or the, you know, whatever it may be. That's, uh, gonna be a big, big issue because I leave six forty five in the morning and there's already traffic on Main Street. And that's, you know, my, my children go to the high school, seven fifteen they leave. And when they leave at seven fifteen, it is like. You know, we get all the Merrimack traffic going to the high schools. They don't go through April. So these are all things that really do.
Right, no, I, no one's trusting the builder. Yeah, that's. They, they have, the builder has to pay for the stuff.
Okay, uh, a couple more questions?
Thank you very much, um, Grant Stone, don't place, um, so there's two outcomes here, either we comply, or we don't. And I feel like we could probably dive a little bit deeper into those, both possible outcomes, so. If we comply, um, not to imply that we want to be overly nefarious in our regulations and restrictions here, but. The general consensus is, we want to preserve our small, we want to. Preserve the property that we have here, this space and things like that, and I appreciate the work that the board is putting into. Thinking through all these possible outcomes, um. It's, I'm not optimistic that we've done enough, and I feel like we could probably do a little bit more. As far as restrictions that we've put into place. The eighty-seven units, I I get that in order to do that, we'd need a a waste water treatment facility. At four and a half million, that's only fifty thousand dollars per unit, very doable. Four and a half million, isn't that intimidating to a developer? Fifty thousand is what? Ten percent, five percent? Of each unit, they'll make that up. I think that there could be more restrictions put in place without necessarily. Going beyond what the state will permit. Um, I like your idea of us getting together, making a co-op and and buying up the property, that would be pretty doable, um. And we have. But what if we were to, so. What if we were to pick an overlay district that's already developed? There's nothing in there saying that we can't do that, how about fifty-five plus community? There's not a developer after that's gonna wanna tear that thing down to building they want. It's cost prohibitive. That's not fifty thousand dollars per unit, that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars per unit, that would, that would intimidate them. Um, what if we were to pick an overlay district with multiple million dollar houses already on it? That would, that would make it difficult. What if we were to put it on the outskirts of town, right beside the. Yeah, there's a lot of different things that I think that we could have fixed, so that's, that's the comments on the restriction side. Over on the. What if we don't comply side? You bring up a really good point. What efforts and initiatives have we put into exploring the impact? I get it, we wanna comply with the law, we wanna do what we're told, we wanna do the right thing, we're gonna lose funding, how much? Two hundred thousand, twenty million? If we don't know the answer to that, why are we even considering not complying? If it's millions of dollars, it would certainly be worth spending fifty to a hundred thousand on research to figure out. Just like, just just like Foxter did, what is it that we would be losing? I bet you would absorb that a lot easier than we can absorb comply.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, uh, I don't want to address the restrictions with Dylan.
Dylan?
Can we lose Dylan?
I'm here. Was there a question?
The gentleman's comment about, um. More restrictions beyond what state?
What if, what if we designated the land that's already developed?
I mean, the nap is technically developed.
They would have to clear and redevelop.
The nap, you need to take down the red houses.
Nap is already developed.
Yeah, so right.
Dylan, answer.
So, I think you, yeah, you could. Probably pick some completely unreasonable place that would never be developed. Um, and comply with the state law. I think that the planning process that. We went through with the board. Included consideration that. There are housing needs in West Newbury. Um, and there is some legitimacy to the need to fill those. Um, and so sites that were. Realistic were considered. So I think it's. The the way the state has approached it, there's a, there's a hammer, right? And it's hard to not feel threatened by that hammer. And just get focused, it it's easy to focus on the punitive aspect of it. And forget about the other part, which is the housing needs part. And I understand that for a butters. That's not a win, you don't have a win by having development near you. A townwide, there is a housing need.
Okay. Well, I, could I make a follow-up? So I. Oh, sure. I get the intimidation factor with the government, you know, they are hammering, they have a hammer to swing, but who's to say that we can't be a nail? In the, in the matter, I think that we do have the ability to put a little bit of fight in that way. If it's because we want increased housing in the community, you know, we wanna attract a younger generation, maybe our age. Well, there's different things that we could do, independent of complying with the law. If we want to see naps developed with four to six houses, we could concede on the frontage regulation, where we don't need. Two hundred feet of street frontage, maybe we could do a hundred feet of street frontage, or maybe we could permit a small road. So that we could get four or five houses on there, there's other things we can do as a town, so I think that we could increase and attract. That population without using this as an avenue to do it. If the state isn't saying you absolutely have to pick green open spaces, or trees, or. Things with only one building, why are we going about beyond? Meet the parameter.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think if, if there are some restrictions, that it does have to be a buildable area, so you can't pick much of that lands, and, you know, undevelopable, and things like that. Steep slopes, you know, impossible to build on, or, you know.
Yeah, and that, and that all makes sense, and that was proven to the state to put them in there, but. Um, clearly, the fifty-five plus community is buildable, because it's been built. Yeah, so that that would need it, and, you know, I use that as an example, I think that would probably be the the most wise one to pursue, but. There's other things that are gonna be less attractive to a developer too, you know?
Okay, thank you, um, your question.
Yeah, I've seen Burger Bush, uh, live on, that's a lane. All I wanted to say, when people were talking about the amount of traffic on one thirteen. But there have been a number of things, bridges closing, et cetera, over the years, women want access to get out of town. And that has caused more traffic. And so it's not just the increase in the population, it is the decrease in our access to get out of town.
Another thing that's happened is, is the advent of waves and computer-pated.
Exactly.
So a lot of the side, like Maple Street, you know, the computer's like, oh, here, take the shortcut around Bolton, and then, you know, you'll save thirty-five seconds, so how's it going? So that, so that's changed traffic patterns everywhere, regardless.
Uh, well, I just want to say, I I wanna wrap up by nine, my intent is to keep the hearing open into our next meeting at April second, particularly because we want. Hear if the state gives us feedback and whatnot. And, uh, you know, I'm I'm just, I'm very impressed that you all came out very passionate. Uh, discussion here tonight, and it is, it is, it's helpful, it's very helpful for us, um, to hear your comments and whatnot. So I I do appreciate that, we we have time for a a couple more, and I will say. We will post some, if we didn't deal with all of the commentary, um, on, uh, in the chat room. Um, here, I, we will answer that and and post, uh, answers to those questions, and, uh. Would anyone else on the virtual? That wants to ask your question here? I don't see anyone, so, okay.
I have a good question, I I'm late to the show on this whole thing, I'm just wondering, was.
What's your name?
Oh, Toby McDonough, uh, in Main Street. Uh, I'm just wondering, were any other locations other than Main Street worked at? I I know I'm late, maybe they were, I have no idea, but it just, Main Street has already had a lot of developments. You know, down Wetstone, and I'm just trying to figure out, hey. The traffic on Main Street's bad, so I'm just curious.
We took Don, Shin, and Flinker all around town, and the whole south end of town, first of all, high water tables is a huge factor everywhere in town. Um, and proximity to wetlands is huge. You take out MESA property, the Bass Endangered Species properties, that is a huge amount of town. So, the that one map that you saw that identified these two parcels. Um, was after evaluating any possible places anywhere else. But the state does like it to be on the Main Street, the fact that there is a bus that serves Main Street did limit, um. It did encourage us to pursue the Main Street properties.
I I think the state also has some, uh, things that encourage you to be near retail, and be near schools, and things like that, so there's language in the.
I thought the whole purpose was transit, mass transit. Would would make more sense to me to be both our tools.
I think that was an excuse by the state, that's how they chose these communities.
I was gonna say, I don't know how many people in West Newbury actually take the.
I'd like to bring back the trolley.
The state calls the policy.
Excuse from the thing, because like I, I think when we start to look a little deeper into this, the, become a little bit more transparent as to.
Yeah.
The bigger picture of what's going on, like it's not as. This, this doesn't have to do with commuting.
I mean, it has to do with housing.
I think that that takes West Newbury because of the.
No, but you're not, but you're not walking from the train station from West Newbury, you're driving.
But West Newbury is a community, I think, because of this.
It was, I believe, it it was a convenient way to lump everybody together. And and say that you all have some benefit of the MBTS. And and thus, you're you're, a hundred and seventy-seven of us are all in this. Mess, yeah.
Do you, do the five point eight acres, or whatever it was, have to be continuous?
Yes.
Yes.
They do, they can't pick two different.
We tried.
We did look at that. Yes. Your name, please?
Erin, Erin White, and I'm at one ninety-nine, uh, Main Street. So I, I do really think that having homes that teachers committed in as support. I think what scared me about what all of you were saying is that we just let the developer come in and decide. What's profitable to them, which might very well mean that the houses that they build are not houses that teachers could have marketed. So if we do something like Grant proposes, and then we take our energy into something, I forgot her name, the person who chose West Newbury to live here, because we live next to the train stations. Instead, let's designate a piece of property in West Newbury, the Mullin property maybe. And say, and do a bidding war for developers, and say, who can come up with the coolest? Mixed housing, all kinds of different things, so that we're doing our own thing, not mandated by the state. To do something that makes no sense to any of us about a property that half of us feel really uncomfortable about. And if the developers have to do a bidding war, and they have, and we get to choose the coolest plans. Then we all get to vote on it, and we all get to decide, hey, this meets all the criteria that we're talking about, but it's not our turn, not.
That's how come you scare the whole way, you could be able to handle that.
Thank you, I, I'm in that situation, it's like, here it is, we don't wanna deal with.
Well, what I think of that word, we we've tried to to do things in the bylaws, and then, by the way, every bylaw is, we approved in town, so the town is done over the years. Um, is the ocean area housing, and then there's a fund that gives, there's a kickback, and a fund gets money. And thank God that a bunch of people stepped forward to create the Portable Housing Trust, which now has access to that money. They're looking at the Mullin property, there, there's a big push.
That's cool, that's on us, and not somebody else, other than my. My neighbor had a question too, what is it, the different four Harringtons? Um, if these two properties weren't available, and you did look around town for other options, what would happen if, like, these weren't available? And now you can't find other places, how do you comply?
Well, it it's, it's not so much a question of availability, I mean, my understanding that naps are. Interested, but they also could be interested in doing four or five houses on it. Um, it's, the property is badly marketed, I mean, I I don't know, I haven't looked at the real estate lately. Um, our our understanding from the Dunn family is that they, they're not interested in selling, but we all know. Family dynamics change over time, and what's said today could be different ten years from now, we don't know, so. You know, it's, you you don't have to find somebody who wants to do it, that might be interesting. So, and and I'm not sure which one the board will ultimately vote for, whether we wanna. We we're not gonna try and bring both forward. We're just gonna bring one of these forward. Uh, that's the only that we decided to move forward at this point. So, I I don't know if that answers your question. You you were talking about trying to find something, somebody who was interested.
If they weren't available, then how would you comply?
You would, as we, as we did, we, it doesn't, the Dunn is not available, but we picked it because it it's open, it has the. The space for this. And and the fact that they're not interested, well, it doesn't affect them, they could sell tomorrow for one big house in the back, and that's, that's okay. And and if we had picked that property, we've complied with the state. The guidelines.
So the law is developable, but not available?
Developable.
Like, says it has to be developable.
Developable land, yeah.
And I'm glad you brought up the Mullin property. My my hope is that some year, we revisit the Mullin property. Um, there was a wonderful proposal, Brian and Patricia were on, I think, the committee that. Tried to develop that, what, fifteen years ago? And and the town does own it, it did not qualify for this program, however, because. It's not available, and it's, and there's no, um, development plan in the works that would allow us to meet the timetable of this program.
One of the first properties we looked hard at was the Mullin property, and the lawyers came back and said, can't do it.
Not yet.
Uh, so I, we we have a couple of things on our agenda tonight, but I I think we've. I've got one, one more here, all right.
All right, so I'm Dan, and it's another one, Bubba Crest Drive, I have two questions, so. Could, were any of the other town properties. Uh, considered for the zoning overlay? Besides.
The town properties don't, don't qualify for this?
Okay, so, if the town owns it, we'd have to sell it.
Yes.
For default, like.
Yeah.
Okay. Second thing, following, uh, Mike McCarron's questions. Is there a way that we can put a zoning requirement on the developer to provide its own water supply? And not tie it into the town water supply, which is pretty tax-deductible?
Do that, well.
Currently. There's a zoning requirement, correct me if I'm wrong here, that requires us to to tie into the town water supply, and since I've gotten the planning board, I've always asked, why?
Exactly.
But that's actually a separate.
Well. Here we are, the question is, can we add that as a requirement?
One they can change before they're done. Dylan, what are your thoughts on that?
I I think that the answer would be no, unless you're, have that in your zoning for every other use in the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think, I think the reason why that is in the zoning is probably to try to drive the, um. Water rates down, the the goal originally, my guess, was to try to increase the number of users, you know, fixed costs. They have to be spread over the the customer base, and the larger the customer base, the better those fixed costs. The lesser those fixed costs are per customer, whereas the cost of water, you know, the marginal cost of water per thousand gallons is quite low, you know, relative.
Yeah, but of course, the opposite is true, now, if you have your own well, and you're not burning the town, and you're building more resources just around the town, so.
Yeah, yeah, that gets into other issues, like trying to search for another one.
Good question, thank you, though, appreciate that. All right, um, I'm gonna move to continue the hearing until April second, seven A M, do I have a tea break? Seven P M. It's the ground now that I mentioned. I really do appreciate everyone coming, sitting, and sharing their thoughts here. That's very helpful, thank you very much.
Can you see Dylan's chat recommendations? Dylan's chat right there. You see it about recommending. I'm sure you'll be in touch. We could always open. Thanks for being in all the work. Thank you for all the. Thank you very much. Yeah, one day. We need to finish our meeting. So, oh, yeah, no, that's okay, but we have other applicants.
Wait, wait, wait. Nobody has to leave. This is still a public meeting.
You just have to be quiet.
We have a couple other items. Were you running this down?
I'm going to do my very best.
We get to ask.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yes, you need to open. We open that.
I mean, yes.
Could you continue your conversation in the hall, folks? Excuse me, could you continue your your conversation in the hall?
Another subdivision business.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks very much.
Well, I might say, I think she was, I might hop back in and. I don't I don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll get my house.
Yeah. Yeah. So is your.
We're getting someone else. I don't want to.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Well, good night. Good night, all.
Hi.
No. Dennis, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right. I I moved to open the public hearing, 125 River Road, Eagle West Subdivision.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, five of them. Thank you. Dennis, thank you for hanging in there. It took a lot longer than as I think we talked about this, what happened.
We can't see him anymore.
He's there. I can see him.
Oh. Uh-oh.
No, it's a cable, I think.
Uh-oh.
We lost our video feed. Dennis, can you hear us?
I can see him and hear him, so it must be.
We got you back. We reopen and again, I apologize, this is the MBTA Communities Act hearing and. I had to use some discretion to to continue. Way path or our time review, so I apologize.
No, I I understand, so.
Now, we would like to set a sidewalk date with you. So maybe, do you have some suggestions for us that work and and we can see how that plays out? I Sue mentioned that you. Have some, doing something with the Concom tomorrow or the next day. And then there may be some changes, but I'm not sure that really would impact our view viewing of the site. How do you feel?
Yes, we have a, so Dennis, greet you, Band of Consultants. The project has a conservation sidewalk tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 to review the wetlands limitation. I I don't think I agree. I don't think that necessarily impact the planning board's. Site visit. I don't know if the planning board has time that would work sometime early next week. I'm open. I know the applicant, Michael Fusco, I'm not sure if he's on the call, he's also. Going to make himself available. Assuming he's not traveling, but he's he said his schedule is open, so the board has a day or two that works next week. I can't do this Friday. And Thursday, I I have to do it earlier in the day.
So we're talking the the week starting March 25th, Monday?
Yes, I was, yeah, I was thinking I can't do it this Friday, but the week of the 25th, I'm relatively open.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Stakes aren't good for me.
How about Monday, the 25th?
I'm available Monday, the 25th. You?
I am too.
Okay.
Sorry.
No.
What time?
Well, we need to see if it's in.
Yeah, yeah, it works.
Okay, Dennis, what time would you ideally like? I I kind of like the morning, but you know, I mean.
I can do morning. Probably 9:00 AM, but between 8:00 and 9:00 AM is probably the earliest I can get there.
I I mean, we'll be there maybe an hour. I I don't know how much we will hike in or something, but. Does that time seem to work? Is that okay for people?
9:00 AM.
Yes, yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Where's the best place to park down there, Dennis?
So we have permission to park at 171 River Road, which is Dr. Harris's property. He's part of the the project.
Okay.
So if you pull into 171 River Road, you can park. There's a kind of a large area outside of his garage. I can.
Thanks.
I can share my screen if.
Did you say, is that John Fusco's property?
No, it's Harris's.
There's also, I I I went down. Back when we were going to do this in February, there's a couple little spots you could pull out. There's not many.
Yeah, okay.
Not many, but there's, there is one or two that just near the, near the the proposed entrance.
Okay.
So I I think that would be fine, Dennis, 9:00 AM on Monday down there. Keep our fingers crossed for decent weather. And. Let's see. My understanding, we do not have anything in writing yet from the building commissioner, but we have a verbal approval. That we had asked for and we will get it in writing. I think it's important for the. The the file that we 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 have his approval in writing of your proposal.
I I do believe that Sue received an email from from Sam regarding his interpretation of the. Of the frontage we're providing along the new way. And I I did have a conversation with Sam on the phone and I, my understanding was he was, he was satisfied with what we were providing for frontage for the. The frontages that we're removing from 125 River Road and the new frontage we're providing along the new private way. And his email is a little bit more nuanced than that, so I I don't know if Sue was there or Sam is on the call still, but. It wasn't email he had sent, so maybe he will be able to write a more kind of succinct memorandum to the board.
Yeah, that's what, that's, I'm here, Dennis, that's what I was waiting for. I had a little back and forth with him because there were some nuances that I didn't. It that kind of left it unclear, even though verbally he was saying, I'm okay with this, so. And after I I spoke with him later today and I will have him to rewrite that so that it's it's clear what he's. What he's accepting, looking at it as acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Is there the other town departments? Is there anything open?
No, in fact, the applicant has responded to all of those other.
Okay.
The ones that are, that he can respond to at this time.
The only other question I guess I had then was with respect to the waivers. Do we have a final list of waivers?
We do have a list of waivers, whether or not any will change based on the new concept, once it's fully developed. I don't know if any of them will change or if some might fall off.
Okay, good. Yeah, we do, we do anticipate providing a new list of waivers. We'll be removing some, potentially adding some based on the feedback we got from Meridian.
Same. Yep. Okay.
I'm not sure we need our Meridian at the site that day. I I mean, I I just try to be fair.
I can let him.
Try to be fair with the applicant and and the cost. I I do think there's probably some more work that Meridian needs to complete on on this project.
Yeah, when they get the new quality plan.
But perhaps it would be best if we. Completed the sidewalk and 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 then turn Meridian loose again to, that seemed like a reasonable.
That's fine.
I think it's fair. I think that's fair, Dennis, all right? Unless you would have the engineer there.
No, I agree that the, I don't know if Meridian necessarily needs to be there on Monday. We do still have, as as you said, we do still have to respond to their comments and they'll be reviewing our revised plans and response to their comments.
Okay, all right, okay. So I I think at the at the moment, that's it for us. Thank you for.
I have a question. Is anything flagged center lines or wetlands or anything, anything that we'll see or will we be wandering in the woods?
We do have some stakes and flags set out at the site, so we'll, we do have the center line of the proposed right away coming in from River Road.
Good, thanks.
And we have some other stakes. We have wetland flags. We can orient ourselves if we go into the site.
Good, thank you.
I did want to confirm, Dennis, that we received your ascension to. A final decision by June 30th, which extends the, extend our timeline, so I did receive that and I will share that with the board. I just received it prior to this meeting, so just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we did, we extend the time to act to June 30th and. Sure as that deadline approaches, we we can, of course, extend if needed.
Perfect. Great. I appreciate that. All right, we will see you on the 25th at 9:00 AM out there. And I move to continue the hearing until April 2nd. Oh, here we go again.
Why do you do them first?
No, we always set 7:00 PM.
Oh, all right.
Use this. I would say. Gosh.
Eight.
Let's put the difference, 8:15. All right. All right, let's go with 8:15 at the moment.
Sir.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. All right, Dennis, thank you. We'll see you out there. Appreciate your patience tonight.
All right, thank you. See you Monday. Have a good night.
Okay.
I have a question for Sue or Brian or whoever knows, if I may. So the hearing is continued, but this sidewalk gets posted as a separate thing?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess that's posted tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, 114 Ash Street, my understanding that's been deferred.
Yes, 114 Ash Street, the A and R, they were not able to get that together in time to submit in time for the, for this meeting, so they will. And they don't have a date certain. I don't know if it'll come in by April 2nd. My guess is that it may not, so that may go till.
That would be better for. Yeah.
Yeah, so 114. Lovejoy, that is the.
Okay.
Do you, do you think that would, there would be a fair amount of discussion on that?
I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think they have the. They have the frontage and there's, I checked in with conservation. Who feels that they could access the site from there. They don't, they don't plan to access. Add an additional access point there, but they have a capacity or at least a lot to.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, you might encourage them to push it off another year, but. And the next item, Drake's landing closer, do we have anything?
That's all in there?
Yes. I guess we don't. Well, because we never get anything.
Right, because we haven't received them.
Right, so. Well, maybe it was left out because we thought something was coming in.
Yeah, I have not.
Nothing, okay. All right, minutes are done. Any interesting correspondence?
I can, I think I can pull up the binder.
Bye. I've got it here.
I'm trying to. You know what? Well, I think, I think Archie is the smartest of the three.
Did you see it?
I did.
Or no?
There's.
That's unsharing. Do you want me to read it to you? Yeah, see it.
Well, we can take a pass on it. Yeah, we can see that's the method.
Oh, that was a minute. Okay, wait a minute. If it's here.
I saw something that was the notice from.
Can you see it?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Is it large enough?
Usually the tail of it.
Yes.
The town of Newbury.
They're working on this too, MBTA.
Oh, it's the, it's the MBTA community, yes, and it's tomorrow night, March twenty.
Great, okay, well, maybe we can.
They had multiple parcels.
You've got four of them.
Well, don't they, they've got a much bigger number to meet.
Newbury, do they?
I believe they do. Yeah.
Yeah, they've got many more homes, what's the name?
I, I think they're, they're the non-adjacent small community, I think.
Oh, they're over the, they're over the population number?
Well, they also have a, doesn't, doesn't it? It's.
They're adjacent.
They're adjacent.
Yeah, no, it's a new report, I don't think they have any, they must have more population than we do. They don't, they're those small. Twice the population, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Okay.
Well, here it says, you know, I'm wrong, seven thousand in twenty eighteen.
So, three thousand.
Three thousand more.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's also a decision, we received a decision for a common driveway special permit from the town of Newbury on Orchard Streets.
Okay.
Butter notification for an upward extension on Plum Island or a, or a house, I think there's actually two of these.
Raising of the dwelling.
Raising of the dwellings. Thirty-six, you know, on Boulevard, another one for the same thing.
Oh, boy, who's hiding?
Well, that was this. Okay, thank you.
Be making a, like, you know, put my money over there and I take my chances.
Yeah, next twenty.
Like it, I'll get the happy offs. Okay, do we have any other details we need to talk about?
One future agenda item, I, I think I may have mentioned at the last meeting, a dark skies initiative that we ought to be looking at modifying our building codes to discourage the use of lighting which projects up and interferes with birds and butterfly migrations. Nancy Decker, Carol Decker and Nancy Powell are the heads of West Newbury Wild and Native, and Carol's an eloquent, she's, she, she's the former director of Ipsut River, uh, uh, Audubon, and luckily, she lives in town, and she's a great speaker, and she's very interested in this, and would like to just have a few minutes at one of our meetings.
Well, I'd be happy to talk to her, I would say that the, the better forum for her will be the Select Board in Angus. Over a year ago, I sent an email to them expressing my concern that the town has not moved to you to LED street lighting, and still had a couple of floodlights up at the DPW garage, should be changed.
We still have an internally lit sign.
And, and there, there was interest and concern, and I believe it was passed on to the Energy Committee, they were going to look into a test fixture somewhere. Nothing has happened. I'm happy to resurrect that note.
But what about, what about a bylaw change for, and instruction and all that kinds of?
We, we discourage, we discourage, um, s- street lighting and whatnot, when any, anything that comes before some special permit.
Yes.
So, I, I don't know, I'm not sure we can man, could mandate in zoning private, private homes, exterior lights.
No.
But.
Oh, we can, sure, good, yeah, you can, you can put in, in your, in your site plan review, you can. Anything that needs a special permit.
Yeah, I think if you're talking about, I think that would involve Sam, if you're talking just a standard building permit, because we wouldn't be seeing we wouldn't see those plans, if somebody's doing a, a, a home on an A and R line.
What about just an, an economy development, is it written in there?
Don't we already say something about, you know, cutoff fixtures and all that, when we have the chance, but we don't, we get a chance, yeah, we don't usually see this stuff.
It, it is in our zoning about lighting should be.
Yeah.
The fees and downward facing.
Should be, shall be a different thing.
But, but, yeah, I, I agree.
Isn't it the design standard, is that, is that what it is?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'm telling you, the bigger problem is the town lighting.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's right.
But I'm happy to, you know, talk about that after we get this, maybe in the summer. Okay?
After town meeting.
Yes, yes.
Well, every town meeting is going to be contentious, you know, until this thing is done.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it was interesting that the opposition tonight, for the most part, were butters.
Yeah, well.
I'm not sure that was, I'm, there were a lot of people on Zoom, and we don't know where they, you know, where they have been more scattered. But yes, butters are the ones who are going to be aggrieved.
Yeah.
As, as we've seen in other projects.
Yeah, sure.
But, like, well.
Okay, so, anyway, let's let's, we'll, we'll look into this, but I, I'm saying, let's.
Yes, okay, I'll, I'll just, I'll let you.
I'm happy to talk about it, maybe we can find out from Sam. Again, after town meeting, the issues with state building code and lighting on a one-off project or something.
Well, Carol may actually be a, a resource on that, if she's a, she's passionate about, she may have done the research and know what kinds of things are possible by regulation.
I agree, I think she'd be a good resource for us just to hear from, whether it's zoning or a general bylaw.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I know you got, she got the board's support, but I think overall in town, she got us.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, that's it, thank you all for the evening and the energy and the effort.
By the way, Newbury is an adjacent small town in Massachusetts.
Is that right?
Really? And just, just fun, you know?
But their recant would be five percent of.
Yeah, but I mean, five percent, we're not just right through it.
Wow, I, I, I would have thought they'd be an adjacent community.
And by the way, I'm sorry if I spoke too much, Tim.
No, no, you were very, you were very good, you, 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 you know? No, no, I, I, I think, I think we acquitted ourselves well, and it was very helpful to have everybody here.
Yeah.
And I, I. And, and I know, we wanted you there with, who knows?
My germs, no, you don't want my germs.
But, and, and I'm, I'm impressed that this didn't go sideways.
Me too.
Because there, there's plenty of precedent around Massachusetts for meetings that do those.
Yeah, no, they're polite, interactive, and.
Yeah, and, and not a lot of underlying conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I will say.
You did, you did a good job, Ryan, managing this.
Right, there was a comment in the chat, I'll just say, I don't remember who it was, but somebody did talk about the fact that it was a good discussion and it was very civil, so that was nice to hear.
Yeah, 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 I, I, so, we'll take that as a positive.
And so, when?
And, 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 and it's impressive that we had a roomful there, and we had, I don't, I don't know how many.
Thirty-five people.
On there, here.
Oh, but on the chat, I, I think on the chat, it got up to fifty-eight, now, a bunch of those were me, Dylan, you know, other town people, but it was still a big turn.
The equivalent of a town meeting.
Four, forty, you mean, you can have seventy-five, eighty people, that's, that's pretty interesting.
Yeah.
And you know what, this hybrid thing, it, it worked.
It did.
I think it was actually good that we had Anne.
Yes.
As, as part of the Zoom thing.
All right.
You stay away.
All right, thank you all, and moving to adjourn.
Are you feeling okay, yeah?
Yes, it's just that strep has been running through my kids and grandkids, and, and I, I'm suspicious, so until I can get that figured out, I didn't really want to get you all sick.
No, no, wise choice. All right, we've all five zero to adjourn, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brian.
Yeah.